Welcome to our work session. And what I'm going to do is start with, yield it to Dr. Day for pledge of allegiance, please.
Okay, we're going to do the pledge first and then do the agenda.
Yes, that's how we change.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The agenda is on, under section C1. Any suggestions? Any amendments to the agenda?
Mr. DePaul.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Ms. Preston, Dr. Day, any discussions on the agenda? Madam Clerk, could you please call the board, please?
Mr. Jaleel.
Yes.
Dr. Day.
Yes.
Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Dr. Carter.
Yes.
Ms. Preston.
Yes.
Mr. DePaul.
Yes.
And Mrs. Lowry.
Yes.
Ms. Currie, seven to zero to absent.
Thank you. We have two members who are missing, but they have explained to me, so the reasons are within the policies that these are, that both will be excused absences for both of them. So, the item D1 is board norms and protocols. The document is on Board Docs for you to review. We go through them in detail through our V S B A governance meeting in Charlottesville, and we'll be doing that again this year. I think I was told, Ms. Day called the V S B A to check which trainings are, they would like us to have, the essential ones. Would you like to share with the board what should you find out from them?
The two that they sent me was governance training, and then they suggested that the V S B A annual convention in Winsburg.
So, the governance training, which will be sometime in September?
If we can get a date, yes. So, we'll be polling you for probably, I think it's a Friday in September, but I'll check with V S B A to see. It's a full day in Charlottesville.
So, we drive to Charlottesville, we can do carpool if you like, and then we spend all day in Charlottesville in V S B A office on Route 250. And the annual conference is sometime in November before Thanksgiving.
Fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth.
Fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth of November, it's in Williamsburg.
Yes, sir.
The problem this year is that last year as part of the budget cut, we took out all the money for professional development for school board. So, as we formulate these committees, my request for the finance and facilities will be, if we can, stipends are gone, that's fine, but the professional development which is required by the Code of Virginia, if we can restore that funding back to the school board. So, we are not tightening the already tightened budget of the superintendent. We need to find that money through savings because the budget is balanced right now. So, it's a very catch-22, what do we do? But that'll be my request to the Finance Committee once we form it, at least the professional development. So, the board members can attend the required professional development activities. Dr. Day?
Should we explain that this document that's attached to the agenda, the norms and protocols, that document is one of the things we'll discuss at the governance training in Charlottesville. So, it's just here for you to see the kind of document that that is, but we will reformulate it if we so choose.
Yes, sir.
When we're in Charlottesville for the governance training.
And one norm we'll follow till September, till we go there, is my humble request to all of you is if you need any information from superintendent or her staff, you can email it to me, so I channel it to her. So, that way, she doesn't call, I'm just picking Dr. Ward, as saying, could you do this thing for me? She said, no, I'm tied up with Dr. Day's work because he wants some data from me. So, that way, we won't put superintendent in a position where, you know, she has her things to be done, and we are not tying up her staff hours for that. Is that a fair statement, Dr. Edwards?
And that's in our protocols as well.
But, you know, till the board agrees, that will be the interim, gentle person's agreement we'll have, that we will follow that protocol among ourselves. Any request for any information, information is good, but we'll channel it through Dr. Edwards so that we can account for the staff hours. Go ahead, yes, Dr. Edwards.
So, and I also just want board members to know that information that we have access to as administrators may be different than information that you get as board members just because of FERPA, the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act. So, sometimes when we'll say, and I'm going to have a conversation with my staff, that's readily available because I can see every kid's individual piece of information. To me, it's readily available for what, but what I may need to put together for you may require a staff member to actually pull, filter, do some things, doctor it up, and you'll see that in one of the documents I already sent you that we had to do that. So, turnaround time is not immediate. It usually takes us either a day or a couple days, and that depends on what else is on the docket. And I'll try to let you know as much as possible when we're all offline, and I think I did, but I might have failed to let you know that last Thursday and Friday, we were participating in the Summer Leadership Summit, which is our training for all administrators. And we have a rule of close them up, no email, no nothing, and it's all hands-on, all teaching and learning, and Dr. Brown, myself facilitated the bulk of that, which means neither one of us were doing anything else, which is why we sometimes get behind. But I'll try to keep that communication so that you, you know where we are with that.
Any comments on provisional norms and protocols? Dr. Day, do you have any more?
You want me to do this too, because this is on your table too. You have on your table something called Crystal's Ds, which is something that I use with the administrative staff, especially when we have new people and we're starting new decision-making together so we don't trip over each other. And we use it as a way to manage expectations, and it's a pretty simple protocol. It's been effective for us. We pull it out when we need to and operate by it, but even with the board. So, from a lens of decision-making, often there are decisions that I have to just make. And usually that's, I got to make them on the spot, I don't have time to get input. We usually call that a D1. Like, if I say I'm making a D1, my principals, my directors know, okay, I just, I got to fall in line and do, you know, whatever the next thing is. You'll see that sometimes when we have emergency situations where we can't just, let me ask every teacher how they feel about the impending tornado that's right there. Like, I don't have time to do that, so it'll be a D1. Most often, we're operating in D2 for me, is where I'll get input and feedback. And this is really, really important that I manage expectations to say, it's my decision, I'm getting your input, your feedback. It doesn't mean that if seven of you say X and five of you say Y, it was seven to five, therefore I am going to decide with the majority. I may decide differently, but I needed to hear the input. So, I'll call that a D2 decision, like, help me make it, give me input. D3 is when we're all on the same playing field, and I'll just say, listen, this is a D3. My voice is the same as everybody else's, majority wins, or we need a consensus of that. And we operate on that. When it comes to really running a school building, from my lens, I'm usually in a D4. So, if I have Principal Wodoka over there, he's running his building, I'll say, hey, there may be some things, just tell me what you're doing, or maybe he'll seek my input. But it's usually his decision as to how those things play out. You'll see that with graduation, you'll see that with scheduling, that most of the building principals will organize their building around a schedule that they work with their team, not necessarily what I've told them to do. They may give me information or share, or share, or ask for my input. And then D5 with principals, I'll say, that's just your decision, D5, that I don't even need to know about that. So, however you do that. That makes it really clear when we're in, especially when we got something that's hard to decide. So, they'll know, this is, this is how we're going to make the decision. We have interview committees, and I'll say, we have an interview committee, but it's a D2. So, whoever's the head of that interview committee, it's by self-hiring someone. If it's a principal, hiring a teacher, while we have input, we'll still make that clear. We found this useful in our administrative team, and we have upwards to 80 people sometimes at our leadership thing, so that everybody leaves on the same, is operating under the same understanding. And at the end, when we've made a decision, and I didn't get my way, it's okay because I can still support the decision. I was heard, at least I understood the decision matrix. So, I wanted to share this with you. I shared it with the leadership team on Thursday and Friday, and then thought about just sharing that with you all as well.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. My understanding in the last two weeks are you're always consensus-oriented.
For the most part, yes.
And she may have her moments where she say, I'm doing my way, go to highway. But that'll be very rare moment. And because we asked her July 11th, was the re-awork meeting? She said, we need to have agenda prep meetings in school, and she made it happen. We have had two meetings so far, and so that has been a wonderful working with you. You know, you make, she's result-oriented, she make things happen. I'm not saying, not saying this because you're sitting in front of the camera. Any other comments?
You still have the hammer.
Item D2 is school board self-evaluation. And let me provide you some context. I don't think we have done that evaluation so far for our school board members. This will be our first year doing it. And as I mentioned before, we, for last few years, I41 have been asking for a 360-degree evaluation for superintendent. But if we do for superintendent, then we need to model ourselves to be doing the same thing. You see what I'm saying? I cannot ask superintendent to go out and do a 360-degree, 360. You familiar with 360 evaluation? Maybe Ms. Sherry can help us. Is she on the call?
She might not be, because it's a work session.
360 is your superiors evaluate you, your peers evaluate you, and the person who are reporting to you evaluate you. So, that way, it provides a comprehensive view of things. So, for, to me, as I mentioned before, what was that meeting? We met here sometime on a Zoom, and I mentioned that how about the school board members also have a 360 evaluation? That way, what we are asking for superintendent, we are doing it ourselves. So, I'll stop there and...
Question. So, when is this going to happen?
That's me, so that's why.
That'd be Dr. Edwards, I just provided you context of all this. Yeah, so go ahead, Dr. Edwards.
Yeah, so in addition to that, and having a 360 and getting input and feedback about how you're doing, you know, Dr. Wodoka and I actually went to a wonderful training in Bedford County on ChatGPT and AI, which is artificial intelligence, but generative artificial intelligence. So, we did not have a board self-evaluation tool that said, how do I do as an individual board member? How do we do as a board? And then, of course, the 360 would be, how do other people see us in doing our work? So, I asked ChatGPT, can you make me a board evaluation tool with a Likert scale? And gave it some parameters. So, what you have that says draft in on your table is the AI version of school board evaluation using, I think, about 18 different questions. The front is all about me as an individual board member, and then the back is us as a board as the whole. So, we were really looking at, how could we use this technology to do something good with it, rather than some of the scary things that folks are talking about with AI? But also, this took about less than 60 seconds to create. So, it was time-efficient, which, if we had to sit down and actually do this ourselves, it may have taken us a couple hours. So, I just offer it to you for something to consider as you guys decide what kind of board self-evaluation you want.
Any other suggestions? Dr. Carter?
And we did, we have done board evaluations, not formal. We, and during, we use that annual meeting to really look at how we've done, worked together, and presented ourselves, but not formally. But I like this. And so, that's, that works, doesn't it? It saves time. This is great.
What 360 will do is provide a structure to that evaluation, which will be consistent throughout the organization. So, she can use that for her principals, she can use it for deputy superintendents. You know, across the organization, it'll be the same structure in year after year, then the assessment reliability. In statistics, we talk about reliability of data, will be there, and it's a measured reliability. So, nothing wrong with the ChatGPT, that's the wonderful tool, it's giving headache to professors like me.
Yes.
Some pretty sinister things out there too, you know?
Yes, well, this is for good.
That's a good thing, yes. This, I was thinking that we, the teachers are concerned about plagiarism, that's the big thing with ChatGPT.
Dr. Day?
So, I want to come back to my previous question. Do we know when we are going to do this?
First, we need to figure out the process of doing it, so it'll be sometime between now and Christmas time.
Sometime in the fall.
Yes.
Sometime in the fall.
But superintendent evaluations, we do springtime. Because I think spring may be a better time, after thinking, because many of us are new. If you are going 360, then our interactions will not be fruitful till, you know?
We have some history with each other, yeah.
And the beauty of giving the evaluation tool upfront is that there are no surprises when you get to spring and you're saying, I didn't realize that this was something that was expected of me, and now I'm seeing it in writing. When you do it upfront, then you know what the measures of success are, and you can also adjust your behavior accordingly if you feel like I'm not meeting those measures yet.
The downside of 360 is the cost. So, there's a dollar amount for per questionnaire, and I don't know how much it is. Ms. Sherry can help us out finding it. So, there's a cost for each survey you fill. Any other suggestions, comments, boards, Dr. Carter?
So, we're gonna, we need to, are we going to decide on the 360? Because I find, I found that 360s, when you're, when the people that you supervise do it, of course, they're going to know pretty much who is filling them out. And sometimes they're not always as accurate as you would like.
Yes, there are flaws in there, it's just, you know, we did the culture survey last year of the school district, and because many times we take our complaints as person-oriented instead of system-oriented. I don't like Gupta, and I want him out of here. You see what I'm saying? Instead of Gupta is not typing well, so I need him out of there. Process or system-oriented. So, we can discuss it more when we go to that governance meeting in Charlottesville, and hopefully come out of there with a tool which we can use. Is that fair enough, Dr. Edwards?
Yeah, it's, it's a tool for you all, and of course, you have to identify what are the goals of the, of the tool.
I think, personally to me, we shouldn't be asking superintendent to go through something which we are not willing to do it to ourselves. You know? So, we ask her 360, then we better throw 360 for ourselves.
So, this is a draft which we will finalize when we go to the meeting in Charlottesville?
Yeah. The governance and protocol is where we look at all these things.
That is a September or November meeting?
We don't have a date yet.
It would, it's probably September.
It's September, okay.
Mistake and call them up, or do you coordinate, or the board clerk does?
Usually either, or chair, clerk. Between the three of us, we try to get a date. You'll get some dates out and make sure that everybody can attend.
Item D3 is policy work group assignments. Dr. Edwards, I'll leave it to you.
Sure. So, the policy work groups are actually administrative groups of me and my administrative leaders. You can see there are six different policy groups. And what we try to do is all of our board policies are on Board Docs. There's a section on there that says active policies, so anybody from the public can see it. If you are a board member who is doing the work, when you log into Board Docs, there's a section that says draft, so you'll have both draft and active. The way that we approach policy work is, it's a couple levels. First, we look at any policies that are more than three years old. And that usually means that some of the board members who approved it may not necessarily be on the board. So, new board members want to become familiar with those policies. So, we'll bring those in individual groups for review. V S B A also updates policies as, as regulations and laws and codes and all that stuff changes, and they'll send us a policy update. We use V S B A policies as our template, but then we put the LCS layer on top of it. In a work group, if we were doing a policy, let's just say it's about driver's education, that would probably come through the instruction and program work group, and then that, that administratively would probably also ask the driver's ed teachers to weigh in on it before it even gets to the full work group, or they may ask the driver's ed teachers to join the meeting if time permits. All the meetings are by Zoom, and they're usually during the day, which is why we don't have very many teachers joining the meetings because they would have to leave their class. So, we try to give that information to them ahead of time and get their feedback. If it's a policy that, that is a teacher policy, it may be a maintenance policy that we do with the maintenance. We met this past year and worked with the transportation on some of the transportation policies. So, we meet for about an hour or two to go over them. It's usually the administrative team and two board members who are also looking at the policies, but through the board's eyes now. So, a different set of, different lens, you're offering suggestions. We put all that together as a draft, and that draft is what comes to the work session. So, when we have, we haven't had any yet, but when we get to the next work session, we'll be bringing draft policies. At that time, we'll go over them. Some of them are so self-explanatory that there's no change, so we'll, we may skip that. Others require us to stop, pause, and talk about what the work group talked about and why we made the decisions we do. Then at the next meeting, we'll vote on them for approval. So, there's two readings for them. The first is at the work session, and then the, the business meeting is where you vote. Each policy group operates separately. So, we got into a groove where one group met on Fridays at 2:00. That was their time, they liked that. By Zoom, others met early morning, afternoon. Some have to meet more than others, depending upon the policies, and you'll see by the policy dates which ones need to meet more than others. So, what we were asking is for board members to be assigned to various policy groups. There's one group that really is, it's important for the chair and vice chair to be on that policy work group, and that's the one that I sit on, which is the governance policy, because it's all of the policies that govern how the board operates. So, the chair and vice chair have traditionally helped out with that, provided feedback. But remember, every policy comes to the full board for review. So, and I can turn it over to you for group assignments.
So, you got the assignments there, any subject? Governance policies, me and Dr. Day. Fiscal policies, Mr. Andrews and Mr. DePaul. H R policy group is me and Mr. Jaleel. CNI policy is Dr. Day and Ms. Lowry. Student services policy work group is Dr. Carter and Ms. Preston. And operations policy work group is Mr. Andrews and Mr. Tross. Any suggestions for change? I'm willing to give up my spot if anybody wants. I've gone through the fiscal policies, it's a very extensive process. And kudos to the staff involved in those hours and hours of going through the verbiage of those policies. Do we need an action on it, or?
No, no, this is just, as long as you give the assignments and...
We are in agreement. Next one is the regional governance boards. And the three boards we send liaisons to, GovSchool, STEM Academy, and Laurel. And I had to beg Dr. Carter to continue because she's been working hard in Laurel and STEM Academy. And you kindly agreed to serve this year on both STEM and Laurel Academy. And you kindly agreed to serve this year on both STEM and Laurel Academy. And Ms. Lowry will be our representative in Gov School. We get on those. I was worried Dr. Carter will say I'm withdrawing my favor to you.
No, I told you.
School board committees. And this is where we hopefully have some discussion. Traditionally, we had two standing committees. Finance and Facilities and Legislative and Advocacy and Community Relations. But this year, we are adding a third committee called Academic Success Committee. The way I, Dr. Day.
I'm just listening, go ahead.
So the way I look at it is, Dr. Edwards is the main pillar of this structure. And she got two pillars besides her Dr. Rodica and Ms. Pew. And we had finance and facilities. We had nothing on the academic side. So Academic Success Committee will hopefully give a direct oversight of the board to the academic operations because academics is what we are here for.
So we need a proposal.
That's coming.
Coming to that?
Yeah, coming to that. Let me give my.
Okay, give your spiel.
So I'm just giving them context of the whole background. And so as I've been talking to all of you, that this committee is needed. And based on the agreement and consensus I have seen, I reached out to Mr. Jalil and Dr. Day to see what, because we need to put it in a policy which will be coming on later on. So tonight we'll be looking at the basics, purpose and structure of this committee. And both have, had kindly agreed to work on it and they had a, a document to share with you. Then I'll go through the memberships once you share the purpose and structure of the new committee, Mr. Jalil or Dr. Day.
Well, is it appropriate, appropriate to have the motion at this point? Or you just want discussion?
Yes, discussion, sharing with the other board members, the, do you have that handout with you?
Well, I will go over a little bit of what we put together. The Academic Success Committee is also known as an Academic Excellence Committee. And this committee will focus on the success of all the students in the L C S specifically. We are not going to be involved in the work of evaluating teachers, not selecting, designing the quality of curricula. We are not going to be working on development for teachers or interacting with the teachers and other staff members for this purpose. But what we are going to do is focus on the metric data, the academic metric data. We're going to look at the attendance, student and staff retention, family and staff satisfaction surveys, and of course, their grades. And if we look at this data and we just keep working on pointing our resources and our focus on to that, those metrics, I think we can improve our scores and improve the academic success of all our students. The committee's primary work will be to focus on helping the superintendent develop a plan continually to define and monitor academic results. We are going to focus on the policies like as a committee would and let the results happen through the superintendent. We will focus on secondarily informing the school board, the, the full board on what's going on through our research and our monitoring so that you are able to conduct proper governance oversight of what this committee does. So that's the basic two things.
Now, committee, as you look at in our policies, our L A C R and Finance and Facilities. Dr. Edwards, do we need a motion now or do we change it as a policy later on?
We would change it as a policy. And then once the policy is approved, the committee is also approved. And we would also, I mean, we started some work with discipline, but we can do that as well. But that's an ad hoc one that you guys did.
You want, you were going to propose?
Yeah, I didn't know if we needed an actual motion tonight or I guess that the board would give its assent or disapproval to this when the policy is ready. Okay.
Any suggestions, comments on Academic Success Committee? Dr. Carter?
Is this the committee that we voted on last week or is this the ad hoc?
No, that, that was different.
That's different.
That's relating to student discipline.
So this is a new committee that we're adding along with the other two?
Yeah, and this would, this I think would be a standing committee. Whereas the one we did last week is an ad hoc committee whose existence ends when it completes its, its, its tasks.
Go ahead.
And what's the monitoring? How are we gonna monitor? Just using data, data obtained from the different schools, data obtained from where?
Well, there's all the S O L results. We have P A Ls, we have I X L. We have a lot of student, individual student assessment things that we use. Amy Pew knows about that probably more than any of us. But then you also mentioned grades, graduation rate, maybe, maybe even look at how many students take these courses versus these. I don't know. I think the committee would have to put that together. But I think there's a lot of things you could, you could bring into it depending upon what the committee decides is relevant.
If you look at it, Dr. Carter, our core business, if you look at from, is to provide quality education to young men and women. And so far, there was no board oversight on that function. Oversight doesn't mean dictating to the superintendent what she needs to do. Oversight is to make sure we are aware of what is happening in that arena. So having this committee in there will provide sort of a board involvement into the, how do you grad, what could we do as, as a policy makers to enhance graduation, rate improvement, retention, things, achievement gap, things we have been talking about there for the last few years.
I'm just trying to compare this with the Finance and Facilities Committee. Generally, we receive information regarding the budget and other things. So what will we be receiving?
Ms. Pew will be the conduit of information through Dr. Edwards. All the academic data you need or the committee needs.
We'll be building on all the data that relates to the mission of the committee. So all that, all that is, that's related will be fed to the superintendent or, or coming, maybe coming from and then to, and then going out to the board. So we will set it, set up check ins throughout the year to make sure that we are actually getting updated information, updated data. And monitor, the monitor the data that is going toward our goals. Whatever the goals are established for each committee. And our committee, of course, is just the Academic Success Committee is what I'm talking about.
This is uncharted territory for this board. We have not done a committee on academics. So this is the first time we are doing it. But as we move, I just want to make sure Dr. Edwards knows this is not to go into the weeds of your operation. This is just to make, so we are able to fulfill our responsibilities, just like today.
I guess I think this is important because we have said over and over and over that we care about narrowing the achievement gap. We talked about doing something about the learning loss that resulted from COVID. And last year, we did get numerous reports about pieces of the data that were available. But it seemed to me, at least as an individual board member, that as a board, we just listened. We didn't really engage ourselves at all in what are we, what are, can and should we be doing to move, to move forward on those things. And I, so I, I view this as an effort for the board to begin to engage itself more in trying to get some movement in a positive direction on the performance of our students academically. Mr. DePaul, you were saying? Dr. Carter?
I was itching, I'm sorry.
Yes, I think all of that is important. I just wanted to know just how I wish to be structured and to make sure we stay in our area and our zone regarding not going into the weeds. So if we hear, like we've heard before, that a lot of the students didn't like or didn't want all of the check ins for the, for some of the, it was something that was done.
High school, I X L.
Yeah, I X L. They didn't like that. So what are we gonna do with that information?
And that'll be forthcoming, you know, it's too early, premature to cite the outcomes. The input is the, the committee is going there and the output will be, and the processes will be decided. As I said, the policy approval will be done. And that will have the layout or the wording of what the committee's function will be. Right now, what we are doing is making sure as a board, we think having an oversight on academics is a, a function we like to have. And to answer your question, Dr. Carter, as you can see, I'm, I'm jumping the gun right now. I didn't want to go there yet. The membership of this committee are three veteran educators. The board members. So they have been in the trenches for years. I can do the membership. Ms. Lowry, how, how many years have you been a teacher?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one years. Ms. Preston? Forty years. And Mr. Jalil have been a teacher. So these are veterans of Lynchburg City School System. They know better than at least me in terms of what needs to be done, how it's done, and provide a very constructive, I mean, underline word constructive, feedback to Dr. Edwards and us.
And I wrote part of that as well in, in this introduction. The board is here to make a real difference in L C S and the children depending on that. Not just talk about the organization. We must maintain a focus on academic excellence by forming and running an Academic Success Committee. It will help save time for the board's discussions, first of all, over time. We're gonna consolidate. All this work will be outside of the regular board meetings, a lot of them. And then the information will be given to you so that we all can make informed decisions, saving time on what the policy, what the outcomes, what our thoughts are, what our goals are and what our recommendations are. And the board has to vote on everything, just like you said earlier, superintendent, that everything comes to the board for the vote policy wise.
And, you know, talking to my predecessor, he said, one thing board chair has appointment in these meetings. And I took the, you know, governor has been pushing for parental involvement in school boards. And I thought, coming to, Mayor Reed is here tonight and coming from the leadership, we knew that parental involvement is a central part of our education system. And so I reached out to community leaders because remember, our reorganization happened on July eleventh. Today is July, what, twenty-fifth, two weeks. So I apologize for not reaching it out to a very broad spectrum of people, but this is the first step forward. So next year, it, it may be, Dr. Edwards will do a blast email and we'll go through newspaper. But we reached out to the community leaders, sought their advice and recommendations. So finally, we came up with two and the third member is still T B D to be determined for the Academic Success Committee. So anybody who's listening and watching and has a recommendation, please send it to Dr. Day. Is it fair, your emails to be?
Yeah, you can send it to me if you'd like.
To Dr. Day.
Make sure it gets to the appropriate people.
We have two board members I'm recommending to this board, to the standing committees for Finance and Facilities is Christie Morford. Christie Morford is a very active parent in the school system. Their daughter Reagan graduated from E C Glass last year. She is an outstanding freshman at U V A, becoming sophomore next year. Their son Colby and Riley are at E C Glass attending Gov School. Her husband is a renowned cardiologist in town. So this is a family who can very well afford private education. But Dr. and Mrs. Morford believe in public education and they have sent their kids to public schools for all this, for their education endeavors. So I thought she'll be an excellent addition to Finance and Facilities Committee. The second member is for L A C R is Carly Schifer. Carly, you're here. You wanna stand up and introduce yourself to the board? Go ahead, come on to the mic, yeah, come on.
Sounds very official. Hello, everyone. I've met most of you so far. I'm Carly Schaffer. I'm also a parent here in the community. I have two girls who are at T C Miller. One's about to become a fifth grader. She thinks she's real cool. And then a second grader and then our youngest will become a kindergartner soon. We've loved our experience with T C Miller, as you may have heard. I'm very vocal about it. So we love our experience there. I'm very passionate about Lynchburg City Schools and trying to continue doing what's going well and then look for areas where we can keep, you know, improving as all things do. So when Dr. Gupta, Gupta asked if I'd be interested in a committee, I was like, yeah, that would be it. I think a variety of voices, whether it's educators, parents, community members, et cetera, is good to have at the table just so that you get a variety of perspectives. I, I was raised, as many of you know, by educators. One taught fourth grade, one was administrator in higher ed. And then I'm a, I've taught English at University of Lynchburg for the last nine years as well. And I found there's not that much difference between college and, you know, second graders. There's a lot of similarities when I, when I'm in both classrooms. I volunteer all the time at T C Miller. I help on leadership with P T O. I've been the president for a couple of years, but I really just like getting in the building and helping teachers, helping with programs, events and kind of building that community sense. Before I had kids, I worked at Centra in patient satisfaction, which is a really interesting piece of healthcare, but was all about communication. And then I worked as community liaison at the Cancer Center. So in pre-mom life, communication was a big thing for me. And then I've, I hope to be able to pull that to L C S in some way, shape or form. I've tried, it started at P T O, but it'd be cool to be able to take it a little bit further.
Thank you.
It may have been too much. Sorry, I'm also an oversharer.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for Ms. Carly? Thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
And as you can see, the Academic Success Committees will still have T B D if you have any recommendations. I reached out, out to a few parents and I'm still struggling to reach that. I was hoping there will be a nomination today, but it has not come to precious yet, hey? So Mayor Reed, do you have anything to say on this parental involvement? I'll give you the floor. You're precious enough to come.
Thank you for all that you're doing already and I really appreciate this. As you know, obviously, the success, academic success of our students is the most important thing. That's what we're here to do. The educators are here to do, make sure that they succeed. So I think the idea of the new committee is wonderful, but I think having the parents as part of these committees is a wonderful idea because I think the parent voice is always a great asset. So I think and what the, the initiative that the governor has led is one that I think would be very cool for Lynchburg to be probably one of the first cities in the state to lead the charge on as far as a school board doing that. So good for you and I'll absolutely support that. And just again, I'm so thankful for an awesome school board and an, an awesome superintendent. And I'm looking forward to a really great new school year. I will say that I got a chance to come in to the Leadership Summit on Friday and do a little cheerleading to our, our principals and assistant principals as they're preparing for the new school year and just tell them how thankful I am for them leading the charge and just the example that they will be setting. Because as you know, the leadership sets the tone. And so as you do, so as you guys start this new season and, and as the new chair, I just, I'm cheering you on as well. It's, it's a team effort for all of us here in the city. And so I'm hoping that we all have a really good experience this next year. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Reed. And I, I can say one thing, it will not happen without the strong leadership on the City Hall and Dr. Edwards. Dr. Edwards has been very supportive throughout this process. So thank you very much and thank you. And I think our joint collaboration together as a team can lift this district up. We'll be asking for money later on, but. Thank you. Any comments on membership? I was told we, we don't need a vote on it, right?
We didn't, we did not vote on this last year. We just got assignments, so.
I think that our policies state that the board chair makes the assignment.
This, the, to, to do the committee structure, we have Finance and Facilities, just making sure that the committee membership is in public. Finance and Facilities is Dr. Day, Mr. Andrews and Mr. DePaul. And Ms. Morford, Ms. Christie Morford will be the parent liaison. L A C R is Dr. Day, Dr. Carter and Mr. Tross. And Ms. Carly Schifer will be the parent liaison. Academic Success Committee is Ms. Preston, Mr. Jalil and Ms. Lowry and the parent liaison to be determined. And hopefully we'll start strong and be successful. Because as I said before, if you are in a hard, medical operation and you, you're thinking about being, you know, finances, but you gotta be thinking about the, the providing patient care, which is the core business of that hospital. So same thing, academics is our core business. So hopefully we'll, we'll be successful in doing that without interfering with your day to day work. I know it's a new territory. There may be some anxieties. I'm just trying to calm them down. We are not coming to, Mr. Jalil. We are not coming to, uh, Mr. Jalil after anybody, right?
That's right. And I have another sentence on that. We will be visionary as a committee. Our goals will be realistically achievable, address LCS promises, and are aligned with our school board's overall values and mission. So, it's to be a boost to the school board's tasks.
It's, it's all positive. Dr. Day, do you have anything else to add?
Just...
Dr. Edwards?
Yeah, just so for the viewing public, and if we have new folks who've never, um, who, who are new to our LCS community, these three committees are public meetings that are typically held here. Um, board and the agendas are on board docs, similar to your board work sessions and your, your regular business meeting. So, while it is a committee, they are public meetings. Anybody from the public can attend if they're interested in them. We do not, um, video stream them. So, we only video stream the work session and the, um, regular business meeting. So, if you're interested, you have to be here.
And for committee m- meetings, I wanted to mention, I mean, Ms. Day and I have talked about in terms of taking minutes. Uh, she was taking minutes for the two committees before. So, right now, finance and facilities will be a very active committee, because we are going through a lot of items. So, Ms. Day will be helping us out on the minutes, and she'll also be helping us out on the academic success committee. For legislative, maybe I'll be your assistant in taking minutes for those committees, or the chair could do it. And same thing will apply to the discipline ad hoc committee. The minutes will be taken by the committee member or the chair. So, that will not disturb the, the work schedule of Ms. Day. She doesn't work full-time. She's part-time. Yeah? Go ahead, Dr..
Uh, there are some, um, legal requirements about what the minutes need to contain. They're pretty minimal. But the V S B A has a little question and answer guide on that, which I can distribute to, uh, committee chairs, um, so that they will know.
The V S B A is useful, at least providing the guidance. Dr. Carter, you want to say something?
No.
Thank you. Be good on the three committee structure. Thank you for your support. Thank you, Mr. Jalil and Dr. Day. You have worked very hard for the last, what, couple of weeks. Thank you. School board, uh, discipline and ad hoc committee, uh, Dr. Day?
Okay, um, so, what, what do you want from me here? Do you want a, a summary of the committee's first meeting? And then, and then there's the revision to, okay. So, the committee, um, are the Ad Hoc, um, Discipline Policy Review Committee, um, met, um, on July fourteenth. Uh, all the committee members, which are myself, Ms. Lowry, and Mr. DePaul, and the parent, a participant there, which, uh, was Rebecca Turner, were present, as well as the Superintendent Edwards and, uh, Dr. Brown from Student Services. What we did is we reviewed our current policies and practices regarding long-term suspensions and, uh, the, the function of the board's discipline committee. And we talked, or I guess more accurately, I talked about, uh, what I perceive as the, the, uh, difficulties or aspects of it that we would like to improve upon. Uh, and we also, uh, talked a little bit about the relevant state code, which sets kind of the guardrails that we have to operate within. We, uh, uh, planned our next meeting for the thirty-first, which is next week. And, um, and we are hoping to make a decision at that point about any changes we wanna make to these policies for the coming school year, so that that, those changes are in place when schools begin and discipline cases need to come through. Now, I did talk, uh, this afternoon to the Superintendent of Roanoke County Public Schools, which is the district that has, uh, the discipline review team approach that we've, um, mentioned before. We had a, a slide from a PowerPoint presentation that was given down there. And so, um, I'm sort of writing up my, my notes for my conversation with him, and I will distribute those to the committee as input for our discussion next week. And I guess we're waiting for, uh, further information through you about...
We sent that to them.
Oh, you did?
Indeed.
Okay. I haven't seen it yet. Okay.
And any changes which come will come as a joint consultation with the superintendent and her staff and the ad hoc committee.
Yeah, well, it would need to come back to the board anyway.
And board for the approval. And this committee also has a parent, Rebecca Turner.
Yeah.
As the current liaison on this committee. So, we are following it all the way through a parental involvement, uh, in our day-to-day oversight of our function.
Right. And then, secondly, uh, because when the committee was appointed at our last meeting, it was just kind of done verbally. There was nothing in writing for the actual charge to that committee. So, I asked if we couldn't have a, a statement in writing for what that committee's duties are, because we need to know that. Since this is a special committee, its existence ends when its duties are complete. So, we needed to know what the duties are. And so, you'll see in the minutes here, uh, there's a, uh, a statement of what the charge to that committee is. And as I understand it, since this is a committee appointed by you, it's your authority to say that this is the charge to the committee or, or not, or ask for input if you want.
And, uh, as I said, again, this is an uncharted territory. So, you know, we, as we walk through this, if changes need to be made, we'll make it. There's no written store, you know, but we know certain things need to be fixed. And as you collect the data, um, you will see it. Uh, Mr. DePaul, you are on the committee, right? Do you have any comments?
Should, should I read the...
It's up to you. Yes, sir.
If you, because the, the specific tasks assigned to this committee is, is, I think, the critical part.
Go ahead.
So, um, I'll, I'll read the part that identifies the tasks. It says, "The committee's first and immediate task is to review and recommend any appropriate changes to LCS policies and procedures for handling appeals." Should be for long-term suspension and expulsion recommendations, and that's what we've been engaged in. Following that, "The committee is to review and recommend any appropriate changes to LCS policies and procedures pertaining to the handling of student discipline problems as they occur in classrooms, hallways, and elsewhere on school grounds. Input from parents, teachers, and staff is to be solicited regarding this second task." So, we, we, at our previous meeting, we're, we were sort of under the impression, I think, that as soon as we resolve the, the long-term suspension procedures, that we would be done. But, um, not quite, because we're being asked to look at other discipline related policies.
We shouldn't be fixing it if it's not broken, but if it's broken, yes, certainly, we need to fix it. So, we gotta be mindful of the fact, and we need to be mindful that we don't do anything in soliciting feedback without superintendent and her staff involved in that process. The, Dr. Brown is there, sitting quietly, uh, so, but, uh...
He hasn't thrown anything at us, yeah.
But the, that will be, uh, the protocol will be following. And, uh, I think on that ad hoc committee, we have Dr. Day, Mr. DePaul, and Ms. Lowry, right? And Rebecca Turner is the, uh...
The parent.
Parent liaison. Any comment? Dr. Carter?
Just to add to that statement, um, oftentimes, we also have disciplinary matters that happen outside of school grounds.
But they still fall within the schools. You mean like on a, at a bus stop, or...
No, this is during the weekend, the holidays.
Cyberbullying on the weekends.
Oh, okay.
Different things.
Okay. So, so you're saying that school grounds is too limited. Uh, and it should say something like, uh, "In situations where school policy is relevant," or something to that effect, it needs to be. Okay, I understand your point.
You know...
I understand your point. I'm...
Just to make sure.
Yeah, I, we'd have to adjust that a little bit.
The second thing, so we will see this, the first reading will be for August, our August meeting?
Okay. So, it has to go to the governance, uh, policy work group?
Right, which we're meeting next week, I believe.
Okay. Before it comes to us.
Yes. Okay. So, all this, yeah, Ms. Lowry?
Also, in that too, um, the cyberbullying you're talking about, does it matter if it's on school equipment or their own?
No, typically, what we do is if we have an incident that started over the weekend, and it significantly impacts, it's usually Monday morning operations. It doesn't matter if it's on a phone or this or that. If they're using our devices, it does kind of help, because we have, um, gaggle that might pick something up and alert us. But, um, if things that are happening out in the community spill over and disrupt the school, um, or if we can be working collaboratively in a preventative way. So, if we hear of something, and this is typically what my staff does a lot of, they'll hear something is about going on, and they'll find, you know, uh, Dr. Carter and Dr. Edwards before anything happens and try to resolve it upfront, so.
No, uh, go ahead.
On the same subject, I just thought of some potential, uh, crossing over of interactions with the city curfew that our students are gonna be under. And it's going to continue through December, I believe. So, that may be something to address.
Which that's also been going well. The last review I read, it's forty-eight percent down. So, it's good.
You know, it may be a small print news, but what we have done as a board with the leadership of Dr. Edwards, having parented involvement is not just a talk. It's true action. This board has shown to this community and the Commonwealth that we truly believe in parental involvement in every day-to-day operation of Lynchburg City Schools. And we've shown it by our actions, whether it's ad hoc committee or a standing committee, we have a parental involvement. And that'll expand from here on, not contra, shrink. Good? Any other s- comments? School board, community partner liaisons. Dr. Edwards?
Speak a little bit about that. Um, we have lots of partners, um, but typically, three are, um, almost interacting with us on a day-to-day basis, and that is the Ed Foundation, uh, Partners in Education, and the Beacon of Hope. And what we started doing, I think, two years ago, is having, um, board leadership meet with their leadership to just kind of talk about some common grounds, some things that they're doing, that we're doing, and where we can be mutually beneficial to each other. Um, these organizations have their own regular meeting schedules, of which I attend the Ed Foundation and Partners in Ed, um, meetings routinely. Um, I think they're, Partner, uh, Partners in Ed is usually monthly. Uh, Ed Foundation is more quarterly, as well as some of the other things. But this is a separate connection for board members to meet with their leadership.
Ed Foundation is, uh, Mr. Trost and Mr. Jalil. Beacon of Hope is Mr. Andrews and Ms. Preston. Partners in Ed is Mr. DePaul and Ms. Lowry. And that goes with your interest, Ms. Lowry. You wanted to push CTE. Want to share with the board? You're, you talk, you're very passionate about CTE expenses.
Yes. Um, uh, this, like, I'm glad to hear that our CTE program, all the students that are involved, they have a hundred percent graduation rate. That's great. We just need more students involved, and I don't know if that means we need a wider range of, um, um, a wider range of, what am I trying to, occupation, occupations to be added to the list. So, it pulls the interest of a lot more students, and then finding the people to come in and, and even developing a center for CTE. So, there's a place that presenters can come, set up. There could be equipment. Kids can come and go, uh, you know, from wherever they are in the city, and even reach down as low as the middle school to get them interested through video and, and interactions and things like that. The more a child is excited about the hope of something, then the more they themselves will pursue it. And that's half the battle.
And Beacon of Hope has become more involved in the CTE aspect. Um, also, this summer, for example, there were internships where students worked at different businesses throughout our community. And, and as you said, it gave them an opportunity to experience, um, the, the fields that perhaps they either are interested in or will develop an interest in. So, it's kind of a collaboration, I guess, of those two organizations.
I think it's, you, Dr. Carter, you want to say?
For clarification, so, the, um, we are attending their meetings.
I was not, never served on any of these, so...
So, how, what, how does the, how do...
These are meetings that you would have with their leadership.
Okay.
So, it's usually the two of you and maybe two of them, like, that meet at a time that's convenient for all of you. Coffee, or however you want. Very informal, um, that I attend their meetings, so.
Okay.
Who initiates?
The connection. Um, generally, either you do or they do. Uh, Ed Foundation, they're in our building, so Dawn's here, um, and she can connect you. Um, and we can use Tina to kind of manage that, but the schedules were set independently for each group.
Can we attend the Beacon of Hope meeting, so?
Yeah.
Okay.
One change I forgot to mention, apologize. We used to have alternates for each committee, and I, I took them out, but if you wanted, we can put it back. My logic for taking them out was, for quorum, you need majority. In a three-member committee, the majority is two. If two out of the three members cannot attend a meeting, I'll reschedule that meeting instead of forcing a meeting to go through. And chair is always the ex officio member of each committee. So, if push comes to shove, Dr. Edwards says, "No, I'm putting my foot down, and you guys need to have a meeting." Then I'm always there to maintain the quorum. You see what I'm saying? But the common sense will be, you don't want to lose the information to those through members. Let's reschedule at a time where three can meet. So, uh, and in gov school, you know, Lynchburg City School was the only school with an alternate. No other school district. Neighboring had an alternate in there. So, uh, if, if you need an alternate, I'm always available. Call me up and I'll show up. So, that's one change I forgot to mention. But if you think there's a need for an alternate, you can sit down and talk, because there's no point blocking a board member's time to be on call, you know, like an on-call, to saying, "Okay, let's see if somebody will call me." Any other comments? Board Advisory Committee, Dr. Edwards?
Sure. Um, so, by board policy, there are advisory committees to the school board, um, that meet, and generally, they report out to the school board at various times, um, of the school year. Mostly in the spring, although the Special Education Advisory Committee will report out in, I believe, November, either September or November. I have to check that date. And again, when you do the annual plan. These are parents, community members, um, business leaders that volunteer to serve on this, these various committees. They typically meet four to five times a year, depending upon, um, what's going on. Uh, some of this is written in code in terms of the membership and the requirements. Uh, CTE has a very defined membership for, uh, who can be on that advisory committee and what the roles are. Um, Equity Task Force is one that I believe that, uh, we did as Lynchburg City Schools, so not necessarily regulated by code, but regulated by us. Uh, and, and talking with the committee lead, so there is an administrator that is on each one of these, um, committees that serves as the lead. So, Janine Daniels-Bolsher serves as the lead for sped, um, special education. Uh, Zoe Stokes serves as the lead for the School Health Advisory Committee. Robbie Dooley serves as the lead for the CTE Advisory Committee. And Whitney Boyd and myself are gonna serve as lead for, um, the Equity Task Force, uh, as well. But, one of the things in meeting with them, um, and trying to, uh, focus their work is they would like a charge from the school board, like, "What should we be working on this year?" They had some ideas, which I put, um, on this list. So, you can see, if you're looking at board docs, that from the Special Education Committee, they really want to focus on c- closing the learning gaps. And if you looked at any of our, um, some of our test scores and things like that, you can see where our students are making progress, but there's still, um, a need to work on closing learning gaps. School Health Advisory, um, wants to focus on mental health this year. They, you know, we did a little last year, but it is really critical, um, to focus on student mental health as well as staff, um, mental health, since they are doing the whole school. So, that is their request of you all to do that. Um, the CTE Advisory is focused more on the two graduation and beyond, and we put that in quotes, because that is from our mission statement. So, of course, we want all students to graduate, but what is their life plan after graduation? So, graduation's a low bar. Um, a life plan raises that bar. And, um, we are, Robbie Dooley and I are working with, uh, CVCC. Remember, they have a lab school planning grant proposal, um, so we're working with them. Our emphasis for the upcoming year is gonna be on sixth grade and tenth grade. Our emphasis for the upcoming year is going to be on sixth grade and 10th grade, so 10th grade, so that they can make choices. When they get to 11th grade, they're ready to make those choices. Sixth grade, so that their profile getting up to high school is rich in CTE, and they're in a better position, better experiences as well. So that, they would like that to be part of their charge and focus and what they come back and talk to you about. And most recently, the Model Policies to Ensure Privacy, Dignity, and Respect for All Students, that was on hold. For a bit from VDOE, and this past week, I do believe that they've taken that off being on hold. The Equity Task Force has a subgroup that is, has been working on that, just kind of reviewing our existing policies. They've been waiting for this to happen, but they would like that to be their charge going to, up into the next school year.
Any other comments?
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. The D nine is School Board Professional Development Requirements and Protocols. As I said, there are certain legal requirements, but currently, we don't have any funding to support them. So we got to figure out a way to reinstate that bare minimum, at least for those professional development activities. And I'll be requesting Finance Committee to look at it as you guys meet, just to recreate in terms of Finance Committee. We have Mr. DePaul, he is a Certified Financial Planner. That means he knows his stuff, and he'll be an excellent resource for us as we charter through some of the numbers, which I'm scared of. And so, any questions on professional development?
I forgot one thing, I'm sorry, I need to, just before you go on to ten, can I cycle back to nine? I forgot to make an announcement that the, all of those advisory committees take volunteers, parents, community members and leaders. And on our website, and the board, you have a copy of what's on our website. So we typically solicit anybody who's interested in being, being considered to be appointed to the advisory committee. And it's a quick survey that you can fill out on our website, just saying which committee you're interested in serving in. And then what we'd like to do is just get your interest and qualifications, like what would you bring to the table for serving on the, you know, these different advisories. That is open now, I didn't realize it was already open, but I have a fabulous team that gets things done rather quickly. Because I noticed that I had some people who already applied, and I was just mentioning this. We're going to leave it open until August twenty-fifth, we want to make sure that if any families are on vacation right now, that it is. Open and available to them when kids start school on, on August fifteenth, so that we get the maximum participation. And we're looking for diversity in, on our groups as well, sorry.
Thank you. D nine, I'm coming back, any other comments on professional?
Can these advisory boards expand in number or consolidate?
Is the, is the members, number of members fixed?
We keep it to twenty, some of them are regulated, like I said, the special ed might be regulated by code, the CTE has. You need at least one person for certain areas. We've kept it to about twenty people because typically they're problem-solving and working, and a larger group may not be as efficient, I'll say.
Twenty per?
Group, yeah, each group is separate, so.
Twenty, forty, sixty, eighty?
Lots of people, lots of opportunities for people to participate.
We have almost eight thousand students in districts, but we talked about attendance of some of these committee members this morning.
Yes, yes, so one of the things that we want to do, we've had, and it's, they're appointed each year. And you will find that there are some people who have been on those committees and have been committed to those committees for quite some time. And then you may also find there are some people who have been appointed to those committees, and they may not have participated, so they may be taking a spot. So I do have the attendance from the various leads for the committees. So that when we get to the appointment list, you can kind of, the attendance and see.
Some of them were parents.
Oh, yeah, it was parents.
Did you want me to say something?
We talked about maybe policy modification.
Yeah, we, last year's board discussed that very issue, and we had an idea about a policy modification. To try to help with that.
Yes, so pretty much all the policies we've been talking about are coming to the governance group. Which is why we tried to, we get a meeting scheduled quicker, sooner than later, so that we can, we can make those changes. And also to model the process for all of the other groups that are going to, the policy work groups that are going to form, so that we have that going forward.
Mr. Jody?
Question, if a couple of parents want to come and start a new advisory board, say, nutrition improvement. How would they do that? How would they?
Well, it would depend, nutrition is actually covered under the School Health Advisory Board, so, but, but if they wanted to, that would be at the will of the board. You all set the who's on, what advisory committees you want. I believe you did that with Equity Task Force, but that predates me, so I don't know the process for how a new advisory committee was formed.
This slate of committees is specified in our policies, so to add a new committee, one of the components would be. An adjustment of that policy.
The same process we have gone for the Academic Success Committee.
Yeah.
Declare a committee, modify the policy, and put membership in that committee.
I have a question, if we're, if there's something like for the professional development parts, or something that we see we want personally to do, and we're willing to pay for it. Is that fine? And will that be counted as our ongoing professional development?
For your, you as an individual board member? Yeah, I think we did that last year.
Okay.
There are certain board members who have not taken, they only take the registration fee and rest of the expenses, they are paid by themselves, so. And I think in professional development, we talked about VASBA will be our main conduit. But it will not preclude you from doing SBMA, SBMA is the right word? In using other things to not complement, but supplement that. So that way it'll be open up for both associations, but VASBA will be the main one in terms of. Meeting the core requirements for professional development.
And I think what we were told by VASBA is if we participate in the governance training that we've already talked about probably in September. And the VASBA conference, which is in November, that that will cover the minimum. If I understood correctly, does that sound right?
Those were the two, or that she suggested that y'all would attend.
Yeah, right.
If somebody wants to do a superintendent evaluation and they are a brand-new school board member, you know, we should be able to find resources. To make that happen.
Or if there's a training somewhere on monitoring academic success, that might be relevant for people with that committee, so.
I have found some information.
And then we have FOIA, and FOIA we have to do every year.
Yeah.
And we really need FERPA too.
Yeah, we talked about this morning about conflict of interest, and Ms. Hope will be here, Dr. Edwards, you want to share that?
Yeah, the, uh, School Board Attorney, Attorney Towns, talked to me a little bit about doing a conflict of interest training at one of your board meetings. That way you don't have to travel, we can bring the trainer here, or either here via Zoom for you all to participate. And I do believe we're going to schedule that in, I want to say, the next board meeting, but it'll be in Board Docs and solidified for that.
Thank you, and the next D ten is High School Board Representatives, Dr. Edwards?
Yep, so for new board members, we have high school board reps that join us for our board meetings once school starts. So they'll prob, their first day will probably be in September. And then one from East High School, one from EC Glass, one from Heritage, and they have alternates as well. In addition, we started last year inviting guest reps from the other schools. So we'll often have little people join us and do a mock presentation for what's going on in their schools. And that gives our young people some leadership opportunities, but also gives them an opportunity to brag about their school. A couple of things with the student rep, the policy, we had started to look at it last year, and then we put it on hold. To bring it back and make some changes in that policy as to the student rep selection and process. Right now, student by policy, student reps are selected by the principal, so remember what I was talking about, Crystal D's, that's their decision. So I kind of D four that and say, just tell me who they are, if the board wants to make some changes in that, we'll change it through the policy. Which is another governance and organizational policy, so we'll have a lot of work to do when we meet. Also, Dr. Day had suggested that we may want to survey our former student reps and see, and learn about their experience. So you have draft document, I think it's number ten on here or something like that, which also is a quick, easy. Liker scale that put together for asking our two former, or possibly our four, if we can go back to the ones that we just had. I think they are still local, we can connect with their families, but to get some feedback from our school board reps. And again, I, I confess that I did my homework through ChatGPT and just put this in. And asked it to create for me this document, which again was created in seconds. But I wanted to share it with you all to see, since board member had suggested we ask students about their experience. Is this what you would want them to share with you? Or are there other questions that you feel like we'd like to ask our students before we reach out and get some feedback from our former reps?
So one thing that I noticed this last year is that. On the policy issues that the board discussed, the high school representatives really didn't engage with that at all. And that there may well be times when we're considering things for which we would like to kind of take the pulse of the high school students. To find out how they feel about some of these issues, and the high school representatives to the board is the obvious mechanism for that. And I think our policy about it even says something about talking to the board about the high school students' opinions. So I'm, I don't, especially if it's a controversial issue, I don't want to put the high school rep in a difficult situation. But nonetheless, I think we care about the high school students in particular, these are young adults that are, that are about to go out in the world. And have a much greater responsibility than they did as middle school students. And I think it would be appropriate to ask them to weigh in, I'm not quite sure how to do that. If we would give them a query, how do you feel about such and such, or would you conduct a poll of your classmates? I'm not sure, but that's the kind of thing I'm interested in.
Just, me as an individual school board member, I will not be running down high school conducting surveys.
No, that, that.
They got a structure in place, you got a superintendent and a principal.
No, I'm saying that our high school representatives would do those surveys.
Still, they need to involve the principal, right, Dr. Edwards?
Yeah, okay.
And there's a structure in place, so they got to follow that, we don't want to be doing willy-nilly surveys and getting everything upside down. Do you want to say something, Dr. Edwards? Go ahead, Dr. Edwards.
Well, I know, it depends on the, the board, school board representative, the students, high school board representative. We have had some that really brought in significant issues that were up for debate or for discussion. But they did that because they were comfortable doing that, I know Manon Shaw was one of them, and then the Jordan and. Jayden, when they were talking, when it came to about COVID and being closed or not, they had that opinion. And they talked about their experience and what they learned from the students, so it depends on the students. And I know Snyder also talked about her involvement with the play and how she felt about that, so. They each bring a different, but I wouldn't have them run around doing survey.
Was that school board directed or that was self-directed?
They were self-directed.
So they did it by themselves, without any directive from the board?
And that's why we encourage them when, as the Chair and Vice Chair, that you talk to them and give them an orientation regarding if they have a concern. Or whatever else that they feel is needed for the board to hear, and I think one of them brought in also about the fact that some of the students. Didn't like taking the IXL that, so it, it does come up.
Do they receive any kind of guidance or documentation to use to help them format their presentations?
So their presentations are made with their building principals, so they go over them with, with them. And I know at EC Glass, Mr. Reed is also involved in helping them, and he's offered to work with, even via Zoom. Both schools with doing the presentations.
I think I'm more concerned about the content of the presentation than I am about the presentation, because they've all been very affluent and so on and so forth. But if, if someone were to say to them or give them a document that said something like, please make sure that you address any issues that are of concern in your building. Or whatever, then that would encourage them, it wouldn't push them, but it would encourage them to, well, you know, I'm thinking about so-and-so, maybe I need to bring that up. Because otherwise, you're going to have to change the format of the meeting to accommodate, we're going to discuss A, B, and C at the end of the meeting. They're not going to be here, they're going to be gone, so unless we tell them upfront, think about some things that are of concern in your building. Or in our school, or in our city, that you want to address or mention to the school board, then that would give them an opportunity to do that.
So last year, that was where we kind of landed, that we would, we would go. But one of the challenges that we had is that the, the Chair and Vice Chair would come up with, you know, this is what we're going to talk about in, say, March. But giving the kids the information in February that says, be ready to go back. And often, we ran into a timing issue because they would be figuring out what we were talking about in March, in March, and, and it was too late for the kids to kind of weigh in. Unless it was some of the timely things that you talked about, they, they could. I know the former Chair and Vice Chair, when they were looking at the policy, they were looking at a way to say. Similar to the way that we did our administrative retreat with the board last year. So new board members, you weren't here last year when we did a retreat on a Saturday, all the administrative teams came in and we talked to you all. And then we decided that in May, we would do a discipline, in April, we would do HR, and we had it upfront. So that the folks could work on those things, and that's what we were trying to mirror, mirror with the students, to give them some things. But it, it didn't pan out, and it just rolled over to, we'll get to that this year, so now it's, it's part of what we can talk about when we meet.
Have they finalized the representatives for this year?
I have the reps from Heritage, but we did not get the Glass ones yet, right? And we have sign-ups for, for most of the other board meetings from schools. The, oh, wow, you got a lot of sign-ups from the other schools as well, so.
Mr. J?
It may be more difficult to accomplish, but I thought perhaps the most significant opinions we could gather are those of graduates. I remember a few months ago, I overheard a twenty-some-year-old say that they were thrown for a loop getting out of the structure of high school. And they didn't realize life was so open and unpath, you know, path for them, so.
Dealt with college freshmen for many years, and that's very, very real.
And that's one thing I think the CTE does, it opens their view of all the different things that you could do in the world, all over the world. And not necessarily take the college route, but get paid very well and do very well at it. So the, I want to open their view, to say, yeah, you could do this, 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 but you could do it in this country, or you could do it in here. Or you could do it there, or you could do it locally, or you could do it, you know, make yourself valuable, you know, so you have these skills that are valuable wherever you go.
Taking permission from Dr. Edwards, we have somebody in this room who has served as a student rep on this board. So you, I'm not going to push you, if you'd like to share your experiences and suggestions. He was, would you want to explain to board when, which year you were the student representative?
Almost twenty years, so it was two thousand four, two thousand five, and great experience, and frankly, it was part of why I ultimately wanted to come back to Lynchburg City Schools. So was, and I, and I think back to some of the folks that were in those positions and, you know, that sort of adjacent years. And lots of really talented people that have gone on to do great things, and so it's a really, I think it's a really wonderful opportunity for, for a student to be able to do. My recollection at the time was that there, there were occasions when there were controversial issues that might have been something that. As you can imagine, I felt no difficulty giving my opinion on them. And, you know, I think there was a conversation about what's appropriate there or not. I do, I will say, just to sort of caution, I don't think anybody on this board would do that, I do recall a couple of things happening that year. I do recall a couple of things happening that year. It was a year that we transitioned superintendents. And I, there were some phone calls from board members that I received that, that made me feel very uncomfortable with the conversation. And I just think, really thinking about who the students are and at the maturity level that, and what's appropriate, I think will be just a very, very real conversation to have because I do recall that being sort of strange. I think there's a lot of value that can be.
You mean you volunteered to Dr. Edwards that you be a mentor to these two student reps?
Sure.
Thank you. Anything, any other comments on student reps?
Emma, I just need some feedback on this document because if we're going to send it out and get it back to you, if that's what you all want to have happen.
When would you like to have that feedback?
About two minutes. The sooner the better, just because I, I know that you'll have new reps coming on, so.
So how about if I make a motion that we approve this document for use in soliciting input from the previous two student representatives?
I have to read it first, but it looks good.
It's just for the previous two?
Well, that was what I said, but if you wanted to send it.
Amend, okay.
Longer back.
No, that's, that's fine. I thought I heard that we were trying to go.
I was trying to see if I could also get.
Previous two, so.
Two, the two before that are still relatively close.
Second.
Second, so we have a motion on the floor. Second, you want to read your motion one more time so the clerk has it?
I move that we approve the use of this survey to be sent to our two high school student representatives from last year to solicit their input.
Second.
Any discussions? Madam Clerk, would you please call the.
Mr. Jalil?
Yes.
Mr. Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. um, Ms. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
I wish to encourage seven to zero two absence.
Thank you. The next one is superintendent evaluation protocols. Madam Clerk, you have a document of timeline. Would you please hand it out to everybody? This is the document from Dr. Brennan. Last year, he developed a, an excellent timeline. And to be completely fair, we had a closed session planned today to discuss processes, but we still have not looked at the processes yet. So we'll be looking at processes and may have a closed session in the next meeting to look at superintendent evaluation. Because when I mentioned this morning, the reason I'm mentioning this morning is we had an agenda prep more, meeting this morning. So when I say Dr. Edwards this morning, I didn't have a backdoor conversation meeting with Dr. Edwards, it was an agenda prep meeting. And, but last year, what happened is each board member gave their feedback to the board chair, they consolidated all that information. And I'll let Dr. Carter speak because she is the most knowledgeable about when it comes to superintendent evaluation. Dr. Carter, give the floor to you and then I'll.
Okay, the superintendent evaluation is one that's standard and that it was developed, or just last year, it was revamped to really mirror that of the teachers. Before that, there were seven domains. Now there are eight domains and pretty much a structure similar to that of the teachers. It's a yearly evaluation. We do the, we do a eval, assessment quarterly just to make sure that there are no surprises when it comes to the end of the year. And just as a sidebar, last year, I remember coming in here and stating, wow, it is so difficult when you have a supervisor that really doesn't know what they're doing. And then I looked at Dr. Edwards and I said, so we, that's one of our things. We hire one person, and that's the superintendent. And a lot of times on the school boards, there, we really aren't educators or we're not educators in K through twelve. So I looked at her and said, okay, so that's what you have. A lot of people that, nine of us, that we have to come together as one to be your supervisor. But also, when we look at that sup, that evaluation, we do it to make sure that those eight performance standards, and we also look ahead each year. So that's what we'll be doing from the very beginning is looking at what performance indicators are we're going to look at to be, to see how she's doing in those eight performance standards. And so we're also going to look at what artifacts are we're going to look at? What evidence do we have that we're going to use to see how she's doing? So that's what we do. And then we all rate and be, and it's done differently every year. Before, we used to do, everyone would evaluate and then we'll come and everyone would talk about their ratings and we'll see if we can come to a consensus. Now we've gone from, we just do our evaluation, there's no back and forth. And we, and those evaluations are divvied up and divided out and come up with an assessment at the end for the evaluation rating. And the last year, they really looked at this to make sure that it was fair to the superintendents because the previous evaluation, it was really not very user-friendly for the superintendent. So now it's a lay, a level playing field. And again, it's very much just like the teachers' evaluations.
And part of the process is the superintendent does two-to-one, two board members with one quarterly meeting. So year end, it should not be got you type thing.
No surprises.
No surprise. So you, you provide her feedback on an ongoing basis as we are going through the year. If something needs to be fixed, in that two-to-one meeting, you tell the superintendent your concerns or accolades, whichever you deem appropriate. Dr. Edwards, you want to say anything about that two-to-one meeting?
Sure, glad you brought that up because when you get your net, this week's weekly update, it'll be a link in there to sign up for your quarterly meetings, which again, they, they're in person. And if that, if the date and time doesn't work, then we can always do a different date and time. But it is an opportunity to go over anything that's in the evaluation. Obviously, any questions you have, anything that's timely. I do try to do a lot of the evaluation similar to the way that I evaluate the principals and such on an ongoing basis. So information is usually timely. If we're talking about something that happened in the fall, you'll be getting artifacts on that in the fall, rather than having me do at the end of the year, trying to put together a whole bunch of everything that I've done all year long through that. So when you think about communications, you're getting them all year long. So I probably won't give you something else at the end of the year saying, here's a summary of some samples of communication, unless there's something specific that you are looking for, which tell me upfront so we can do that.
Yeah, I add something. This, I want to sort of back up a little bit because this was all new and confusing to me last year as a new school board member. State law requires us to conduct an evaluation of the superintendent annually. And we're not allowed to do it just any old way we want. There are some legal, there's a state mandated document that describes the process that we have to use and how much leeway we have within that to adjust things. And it's, I probably, we should probably send that document around to people because it explains it fully. And so what will, what will happen, and this is sort of reiterating some of what was just said, is that initially, we can't, we have to sort of formulate how the process is going to work for this year. So the superintendent knows how she will be evaluated, that's only fair. I should also say, her contract specifies that we use the same evaluation tool. So we are legally bound to use this particular evaluation tool and stay within the guardrails that it prescribes. But as I say, there is some leeway for how we do it. We, at the beginning of the year, we agree on specifically how it's going to be done. And then at the end of the year, we complete the evaluation.
So Madam Clerk, would you be kind enough to send that evaluation document to all the board members, please? At this time sheet, you can see mostly are spring dates. So we'll readjust the calendar this year and we'll recircle it back. This was just a sample to show you what was done last year.
Yeah, it's called the Guidelines for Uniform Performance Standards and Evaluation Criteria for Superintendents.
You want to forward that to each?
I can, I can just forward it to everybody or I can send it to Tina, whatever's most appropriate.
You can forward it to everybody. That takes care of the business. But if you can keep her in loop and Dr. Edwards.
Yes, I'll copy everyone that's relevant.
Dr. Carter?
A lot of times when people see that we're having a closed meeting to discuss the superintendent's evaluation, they think, ooh, something's going on. But that's not the case. We have to do it on a quarterly basis. And sometimes if we, for any reason have to change, sometimes it seems like we're doing it so many times, but it really isn't.
Yeah, and we'll be hopefully making this change. Any discussion of processes we can do in a public domain. But if anything related to personnel matter, we'll go in a closed session. As I said, hopefully, we as a board will not have any surprises for Dr. Edwards. If you don't like what she's doing, let her know right away. You don't have to wait till the year end to say, good, guess what? This is the problem. Is that a fair statement, Dr. Edwards?
Yep.
And.
As, as we go into closed session, because of what you just mentioned about concerns, it might be a good idea to cite the, I know there's like four, you know, forty-eight or something different criteria. So people can at least have that ease of mind that it's, this is just a formality.
We're, we're legally supposed to cite the criteria when we go into closed session, too.
Okay.
I think you're saying on the documentation that the public will see, though. Is that what you're talking about?
No, it could, and it could, it could include that, whatever is releasable to the public. But yes, you know, we've got a whole bunch of things. We, if we were talking about real estate purchases, we would define that.
Yeah.
So.
It's supposed to say it in the agenda.
Okay, super.
But you're saying, instead of saying there's a, to really specify that this is the quarterly assessment.
If that's possible, if that's legal, if, if it's possible. Because we don't need any more angst.
Yeah. Any other comments?
I was just going to say, it could say something I'm, I'm trying to get in your head now, but.
Be careful, that's a dangerous term.
As prescribed by such and such and such and such, we will go into, or the school board will enter a closed session to discuss blah, blah, blah. And then that takes the weight off of people being critical of or questioning what exactly is going on. We're doing what we're supposed to do.
Yes, thank you.
Are we supposed to email one another in the way that you did, superintendent, with blind carbon copy?
Yeah, the, the reason why I do that is because I do not want anything to be construed as a meeting if you guys start replying back and forth. And you could mistakenly look like you're conducting school board business when you reply all, reply all, reply all, when all your school board business should be public. So when I send you something that you might want to comment on, you're only going to be able to comment back to me and doesn't look like we're conducting a school board meeting behind closed doors.
Otherwise, it'd have to be announced.
And open to the public.
And all that information is for under FOIA.
That's right.
Anybody. That's a good question. Any others? Item E one, no policies for review. Informational items are July twenty-seventh, new school board member orientation at one, two, three here in admin building. July twenty-eighth, finance and facilities, meeting at three-thirty in school admin building. This will be a very short.
Yeah, the only agenda is to select the chair.
Only agenda is to select the chair. Next school board meeting is August first. And we have a finance and facilities committee meeting on August first, which is not listed here, Dr. Edwards?
No, it, it.
Is it?
It's listed at three, three P M. So since we finished a round of all of our community meetings, we got feedback, lots of information. So we want to have a finance committee meeting before we have the joint meeting with the city council to kind of go over what we heard, but also put some tighter numbers around some of these costs and things like that. So I gave you sort of the menu of what we, what we were starting with in terms of, you know, here's the cost of a renovation, but that's just based on square footage. So that's kind of like a, a broad cost for a rental. But now looking at it through the lens of combining some things and putting some things. So at the finance meeting, Dr. Wodoka will kind of go over that with the finance committee, which we wanted to have sooner than later. So I know we're pressing you to have a meeting before the meeting, but we also want to make sure that you have information before going into the joint meeting with city council.
So there, there are two meetings on August one.
Yeah, we have a regular school board meeting.
At five, and then there's the finance and facilities meeting at three.
Yes, so bring lunch and dinner.
Or dinner, or a sleeping bag or something.
What I'm hearing from you, Dr. Edwards, is we've been asking for numbers. So numbers will be visible now on August first to the finance and facilities committee.
Yeah, we get, we gave you the original numbers that were the Dominion seven numbers for the cost of, like, what would you do for the renovation? What would you do there's some safety things and blah, blah, blah. We're going to continue that and break it down a little bit more across all of the schools. And also include in that, like, we've got to be mindful that while we map out our elementary schools, our high school that we just built is getting older, too. So it will need some maintenance at some point. So we need to figure out where does that maintenance fall for the other schools that aren't on that list as well, so.
Out of curiosity, will that numbers include potential savings and any repurposing, closure and all those? So the financial information will be provided. Mr. DePaul, you want to say something?
No.
All right. August eighth is the joint city council, school board meeting. The location to be TBD, is the location not final yet?
We do not have a location. It, even though it's a joint meeting, it typically is a work session for city councils. So they will give us the location. We've been at the Business Alliance, but I did not want to put that down there as final. I don't know if that's final. Have you heard that?
I thought it was, but.
Okay, I don't, I, yeah, I don't know. I, last I saw it was TBD, so I haven't looked again.
So I, and just in case I missed something, do we all attend that or just you? We all attend that, okay.
Yeah, well.
Yes.
Don't miss it.
Yes, okay.
And the next school board work session is August fifteenth at five P M here. Anything else for good old you or Dr. Carter?
I, as a new board member, I know at some point you realize that what you were told when you are, go for nominations or interview that two meetings? You attend two meetings a month? That's not true. The school board has numerous meetings.
Definitely figure that out.
Go ahead, Dr. Edwards, you were saying?
I, I just went on the city website to see, they have the city council work session on August eighth, right? That's a, that's a convenient day, at four o'clock at city council chamber. That's on their website, they may change it, but.
One thing I want to say, Ms. Laurie, I called her last week. She picked up the phone and she was in St. Thomas. But she said, no, I'm going to spend some extra money to pick up the phone and talk. So thank you very much for doing that. The communication was excellent, so. Nothing else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I have one.
Mr. Jalil, go ahead, sir.
How do we go about getting a welcome back to L C S for substitutes? Letter, email or a physical letter?
I'm not sure. For substitute teachers?
Yes. Is that something that we can, I can go, we can work on through the email or something we'd have to vote on?
All right, you, you want a welcome back letter or you want us to send welcome?
To all the substitutes, like, thank you for coming back for the next school year. This is what's going on, this, you know, just a couple of little updates and then.
Okay. Well, no, we're welcome, well, working on the welcome back letter for staff that are coming back because we are having convocations. We have not, to my knowledge, sent anything to substitutes in general. And then we have different levels of substitutes because you'll have the, the long-term subs, you have daily subs and just once in a while subs, but.
I think one probably way to reword what he's saying is invite them to convocation.
That's what I was going to say, do they, are they invited to convocation?
Yeah, just invite them to convocation.
Okay, thank you.
Now they're the ones that we want back. To invite them. We've got to be careful who we're inviting, but.
But let's see, I think what he's saying is let.
But let's see, I think what he's saying is let them know they're welcome.
To come to come to convocation. And that letter did not go out yet, so.
But do we normally invite the, like, our long-term subs?
Long-term subs we do because we, we kind of know, a daily sub, I might not know you're going to sub until you sub on November seventh. You will be at, like, we have lots of people in our system for substitutes, but not everybody subs all year long-term, so.
I wanted to bring one more thing, as we go into this facility study and joint discussion, personally, I wanted to see finance and facilities committee to be the face and the brain and be representing board forward and channeling all their communication through them. That be okay? So we have two, three very, you know, knowledgeable people on that finance and facilities committee. So that'll be coordination in terms of with the city or with your staff. Anything related to facilities will be through finance and facilities committee. Is that appropriate, Dr. Day?
Seems reasonable.
So.
Maybe not fun, but reasonable.
The chair will be the main face, whosoever is it. And then the committee will be the face of this board. So is there a motion to adjourn?
A motion.
Ms. Laurie, motion?
Second.
Second by Dr. Day. Madam Clerk, could you call the role, please?
Mr. Gilleyo?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Yeah, thank you.